Let the flag be lifted to the flag of the United States of America, the people of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
It's time we have our here because we ask like to ask councilwoman Dillington to give our indication.
Will you pray with me please? Heavenly Father, we thank this world today that you give us your Lord and we ask that you help us be with us and guide us in directions during the government of this county, dear Lord, we'd ask you to help us remember the time of election, dear Lord, as we work for those in our country, our county and state, dear Lord, we'd ask that you take care of everyone here, please help us keep you first and foremost in all our thoughts, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Number five, approval of amendments from September twenty fifth, twenty twenty four, requires motion. I'm sorry, approval of agenda, I'm sorry. Approval of agenda number four requires a motion. You got a motion, we'll give a second. All in favor? Number five, approval of amendments from September twenty fifth, twenty twenty four, requires a motion. You get a second. All in favor? Number six is plaque presentation, as the council step down and we ask Assistant Bishop Daniels to step forth, please sir. This plaque reads, presented to ship names for dedication and leadership, sixteen years of service and sincere appreciation for committed and dedication dedicated services to our community, be proud of your work of the work you do, the person you are and the difference you make, presented October twenty third, twenty twenty four by the Dillon County Council, Councilwoman Deidre Dawkins Chairwoman, and all of our names are listed below.
Thank you so much, thank y'all very much, I appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Thank y'all so much, I appreciate it. Thank you. Yeah, come on, come here, Ron. Thank you, thank y'all very much.
Number seven is recognition of the Methodist men, Sheriff's Department EMS and Fire Department. There's something here, Dillon County Council would like to take this opportunity to thank those of the Main Street United Methodist Men's Ministry EMS Fire Department and Sheriff's Department for giving your time and energy showed during the devastation of Hurricane Helen, you represent the best of humanity, helping those in need, due to your strength and courageous acts of kindness makes it makes a positive difference in our community and those in need, we appreciate all you do, we would like to ask all of our first responders that are here to kind of line here and the councilor stand behind and we'd like to take a picture.
And Methodist men.
And Methodist men, and thank you Pastor as well, you're welcome to join us as well.
While y'all are waiting, please go on there.
Yes, thank y'all for all that you do, representing our county.
And if any of y'all, if any one of y'all have anything to say about what y'all did or what y'all seen while y'all were there, we appreciate that too.
Sheriff, you want to get in these and get some of your department?
Daniel, takes up a little room there.
Yeah.
You okay?
We appreciate y'all's support, we appreciate all the effort and everything that was given for us, given the opportunity, we took some, some things up to Fairview, North Carolina that were given by the Methodist men and absolute devastation up here in North Carolina, entire town was just completely wiped out from some of the flood and everything, we worked in Anderson County for several days, had an opportunity to remove some trees off the houses for some elderly folks and first responders and people who hadn't had an opportunity to get to it, so really appreciate y'all's support, appreciate the opportunity to be a part of it and a good opportunity just to serve.
Thank y'all for everything. The Methodist men were instrumental, we could not have happened without the supply of the equipment that you brought, we greatly appreciate that.
We appreciate y'all's period and everybody going to help and doing it all, you made Dillon County proud. Thank y'all.
Number eight, ordinance number twenty four dash fourteen dash second reading, an ordinance by Dillon County Council changing the zoning map classification for single and two family residential RS two to agricultural AG one to open a lavender and herb farm with stimulated forest farming, tax map number zero one two dash zero zero dash zero zero dash one four eight, property owner Gary Dick Canby, proposed location forty three fifty seven Sag Brush Drive Dillon, South Carolina two nine five three six, requires a motion.
Chairman, if you think I'll make a motion for that.
You got a motion in a second, all in favor? Number nine, ordinance number twenty four dash sixteen, second reading, an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee and lieu and avalerium tax and incentive agreement by in between Dillon County, South Carolina and a company known as Red Diamond acting for itself, one or more affiliates and or other project sponsors to provide for a fee and lieu and of avalerium taxes, certain infrastructure credits and other incentives to include the project within the bond boundaries of multi-county park to modify building permit and produce fees consistent with the foregoing and other matters relating thereto, requires a motion. Second, requires a second, all in favor? Number ten, ordinance number twenty four dash twenty two, first reading, amendment to agreement for the development of a joint industrial and business park Marion and Dillon Counties to include Fox Hollow Solar LLC, requires a motion.
I'll make that motion.
You need a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Number eleven, resolution number twenty four dash twenty one, a resolution authorizing the enlargement of the joint county industrial park between Dillon County, South Carolina and Marion County, South Carolina and other matters related thereto, requires a motion. We need a second?
Second.
All in favor? Number twelve, policy by Dillon County Council establishing a procedure to expend, expend funds appropriated by the Dillon County Council, denominated Dillon County, County Dillon County Recreation Funds for the use by eligible entities that serve a public purpose, requires a motion.
This is the policy, just so we have it in place for our recreation funds that y'all approve each month, so we know the guidelines in there and there's a form for it.
I was told that we couldn't give money to anybody, this way at least they had a five oh one C three, is that right?
It's, it's not a five oh one C three, they've got to be recognized through the Secretary of State as a nonprofit.
We just can't give to an individual is basically what we can't do to start with is what this is saying.
Okay, I understand that, but just like any organization, that might not be a nonprofit, you can't give to?
If you look at item number, let's see where it is, it pertains to that.
Understand not writing a check to an individual.
The third, yeah, the third whereas, the timing as it, the third whereas, look at the policy, the third whereas.
Whereas any recipient of the fund shall should be a nonprofit or charitable or exemplary or governmental or other entity that provides a public use and a public purpose, that picks up all those.
Okay.
Requires a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Requires a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? All opposed? All in favor? All right, number thirteen, council recreation request.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, just to let you know now that you're still, because you're using governmental funds, you can't just give it to individuals, so that don't change that, but this is to get you a policy in place, if anybody asked a question about it, where you'd have a policy that you could go by with the form to fill out also.
I thought it was protection council.
It is, that's protect council.
Number thirteen, council recreation request, A, girls without, girls with ambition.
Our mission is to create uplift, inspiring and inspiring ladies with positive mindset. Our team recognizes the challenges of this generation by instilling core principles of self-worth and honoring legacies of the old, we lift up our young women to strive through all barriers, we believe that if we reach one, we reach a million. And they are asking for, the purpose of their donation is, is a new startup nonprofit organization and they plan to use the funds to plan educational trips for the youth, also educational programs and plan possible established meeting place and deal community outreach initiatives.
And they're based out loud, right?
Yes.
I can draw one.
Yeah, uh huh, Mr. Buzz is donating twenty five dollars.
Put me down for a hundred person. I get a hundred, too.
Anybody else?
I'll give a fifty.
Any more requests?
Yeah, two more. Dillon County Farm City Youth Committee seeking donations for their annual Farm City meet on November nineteenth at six o'clock PM at the Dillon Williams family, donations of any are appreciated in this function, Johnny Davis, Mr. Buzz is donating a hundred dollars.
I'll give a hundred, too.
Dillon High Street Athletes, we have a donation, Stevie is giving five hundred dollars, Mr. Buzz is giving twenty five dollars.
Five hundred. Five hundred, I'll give fifty. All right, we heard the recreational request, requires a motion. Second, we need a second?
Second.
All in favor? Number fourteen, Steve Johnson and Glenda, I don't want to miss your last name, is she here? Stenee?
I keep pronouncing it.
All right, Stenee, PD Coalition, sexual assault.
Good afternoon, everyone, and Glenda's not here today, I'm gonna take up about two minutes of my time, if you've been around town, you've seen the purple ribbons on the poles around town, a lot of the door knobbs around town, it is a domestic violence awareness month, I am basically here as a member of the Board of PD Coalition, just to really, I'm here not to ask for anything, I'm here to thank y'all for not only your financial support that y'all give us throughout the year, but also just helping support the events that we do, in-kind contributions, just all kinds of things that the county does for us throughout the year, so I'm just here to thank y'all, so appreciate everything that y'all do for us, and if there's anything that we can do for y'all, especially as a board, you know, please let me know, but we do, really do appreciate working with the council, the administration, unfortunately, you have instances and you see this like in North Carolina with this storm, it's local people helping local people, and so we have unfortunate things like this that happen, we don't even want to have to recognize domestic violence at all, but we do, and since we do, we do appreciate that our county pitching in and helping us, you know, where they can, so I'm here to say thank y'all, appreciate everything y'all do, and not to be rude, but I do have to bow down out here, but you know, I just thank y'all, if we can do anything for y'all, y'all please let us know.
Appreciate it, thank you, thank you, what you do.
Thank y'all.
All right, number fifteen, Joan Davis, gravel on Eagle Drive.
Good afternoon. I thank y'all for your time, my name is Joan Davis, I live in Oakland, Humidity, Dixie, Edgar's twenty four thirteen Eagle Drive, I've come to express my concerns about the gravel, well, I'm gonna say the dust that they're putting on the streets on twenty four thirteen Eagle Drive and around that, and that area, when they first put the gravel down, I was disappointed that they weren't gonna pave the roads after almost forty years, but I said at least it's better than, you know, just being dirt, and so it was fine for a while until about around November or October of last year, it was just, I mean, dust going all over everywhere on our cars and our houses and I had never experienced before, so I contacted Ms. Dawkins and she was telling me about, you know, to do a petition, I was getting ready to go in the hospital for a knee surgery, would have a knee replacement, and I couldn't do the petition, and everything settled down, and I said, well, okay, when she told me, she said, they said that it was just a bad batch, I said, okay, I'll give them a minute for another doubt, maybe it was a bad batch, and I hadn't experienced anything else from last year up until this last time that they put this stuff on the road, and I want to tell y'all, it's a mess, it's a gray haze over all the area over there, when truck, cars, trucks, I live right on the entrance, if you saw my letter or whatever, I have pictures, you saw, I live right on the entrance going into twenty four thirteen Eagle Drive, all, everything is behind me, all the other houses is behind me and over on the side of me, most of everything goes by my house, I have long distance trucks, I have UPS trucks, I have FedEx trucks, Prime, Amazon, everything, I mean, and there are people that go over the business and everything, you know, the people that live over there, if they want to keep their cars from being all messed up, they drive slow, but you have to realize, you have people that don't live over there, four wheels and everything, and it's just a dust storm, and if, I don't know whether you have my pictures or not, what you saw, and you might look at the pictures and think, well, maybe she just need to pressure wash her house, we do that, you know, when you out in the elements and stuff, if you live on a dirt road or even or not, you still have to do that kind of stuff, but I want y'all to know, my house is a mess, my cars is a mess, I have window units in my home, and you can look at my air conditioner, you can see where it's going in my house, my granddaughter began to say, Mom, my air conditioner is not working good, she beginning to having migraine headaches, I have a doctor's appointment tomorrow, I sleep with a CPAP, I can't sleep with my CPAP for trying to get phlegm and stuff out of my throat, so I'm going to the doctor to see whether that's the cause of it, it's devastating, I wish you all just could come, the pictures, you know, they're there, but just come and just look in and see what that gravel is doing, and I'm just saying, you know, if it was a bad batch, we can't take too many more bad batches, I mean, I'm bracker two positive, and that's, that means I have the cancer gene, my, my daughter, which is right there, she is, is what, five years?
Stage three.
Stage three breast cancer, she doesn't even want to come over there, because it's just breathing and we got little children paying out there, if you could just see, I mean, I, I want to wish I could have, she would have took a video and just see when cars pass by, the dust hit just follow, you hit this sit, and it's not dust, it's grit, and if you, it's all over your cars, you see the pictures of my car, I have a two thousand Lexus, two thousand two Lexus, it's messed up, I have a two thousand seventeen Ford Escape, my daughter has a two thousand seventeen Honda, and it's just, if you go out there, you may want to spray your windshield wiper fluid, just so, you can't do that, you have to spray it down, because if you do, your wheels are gonna get scratched up, I mean, literally, it's just gritty, it's gritty to the touch, I have my banisters painted, if you go out there and touch my banisters, all you're gonna get is gray dust, and I know it's not healthy, I know it's not healthy, and I begin to look it up, and it said it's cancer causing, because it just ground up rocks and dust and, and stuff like that, grit that we're breathing in, and, and I mean, I don't know whether you can do anything, but just give me some numbers, give me where to go, tell me where to go, something has to be done, that, that gravel, dust really has to come off of our streets over there, we should be able to be live, live better than that, and I.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
I know you said that they put it down there and it was bad for a while, and then it wasn't bad for a while, did they come put more on there?
Yeah, they, they do it every so often, when they drag the roads like they were doing with the dirt, when they first put it down, like I said, I thought I was, you know.
But they just come and dragging it when they come back, they're not actually putting more of it down?
Yeah, they're putting more down, just like they would, you know how they come in, well, I said, put more down, maybe they're just dragging it, I don't know, but I know when I see the, the pile thing come through, but it, I don't know whether it's making it worse.
Yes, ma'am, my suggestion would be, is to get somebody to talk to the CTC, CTC committee, they're the ones that put it down, and see if they might couldn't maybe take it up, but that, that would probably be my suggestion for somebody to talk to.
I'll talk to Earl about it, because I think there's some stuff that they can put down, and then Mr. Townsend talked about it, he gave me some, some things to think about that we might can refer to the CTC that they might can do to it.
And actually, that's what I thought, you know, had done, because like I said, when they did it, I started kind of researching, and it was saying that there was stuff that could be put down from the dust, but I'm just saying, if they're, they're doing that from the first time it happened, I had no complaints, but when the first time it happened last year, I called her, because it was just that bad, I called her, she said it was a bad batch, okay, if they come and put this stuff down and they forgive it, don't put it down the next time, we can't take too many more bad batches, I don't want to catch cancer, I just retired from PD Community Action Agency for twenty four years, I can't even sit on my porch, my chairs, you have to clean stuff, I know that, but this is ridiculous.
I think probably what they're doing, they're going around scraping, they couldn't buy it, scraping it and stirring it up.
Before they put the rock down, before they put the rock down, the gravel down and used this dirt, was it better then?
Yes, sir, it really was, I mean, we wanted, we needed it paved still, but I said, okay, at least it's better than, you know, the dirt, the mud and everything, I mean, riding on the roads, you know, stuff, but it's just, it's just, I think it's just detrimental to our health, my grandbaby's health, you know, and everything, my health, you know, and everybody, you know, over in that area, it's ridiculous, you all, and I invite any of you to come to my house and see that, I am not, I am not kidding you, it's awful, it follows you even across the street, it just sits up in the air, a car passes down my road, you can just watch and it look like this fire just running across the smoke, the dust, it's, and it's gritty dirt, it's not dust, it's not sand, it's gritty dirt.
Ms. Davis, we, we thank you for coming and bringing this to our attention, we'll let Chairwoman Dawkins know you came, and also ask to make a recommendation to the CTC Board to take a look at that for us, okay?
I appreciate it, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for coming. Number sixteen, approval of Dillon County application for the Houston Courthouse Browns after Capa Alpha Sorority Inc., board registration rally time four o'clock to six thirty PM, Wednesday, October thirty of twenty twenty four, will be serving free hot dogs, requires a motion. Requires a motion? Number seventeen, approval of land, land clearing bid for the new EOC, requires a motion.
Mr. Vice Chair, I need to discuss those with y'all before we vote on them, just to make you aware, we had sixteen bids for the EOC lot clearing, Matthew and I opened those bids yesterday, we had a seventeenth come in after, what was it, about four o'clock, Drew, so that was after the deadline, so out of those sixteen bids, we have those there, the lowest bid was for twenty one thousand, but Matthew has talked to Mr. Rao, and he does feel like he can come up with the worthless comp, liability, insurance to cover all that, the next three low bids you had there, you can see they're within just about a thousand dollars of each other, you've got Clean Acres, Goldman Site Services and Dirt Dober, I think one of those is out of Scranton and one's out of Georgetown?
Scranton, Hartsfield and Mullins.
Scranton, Scranton and Hartsfield is Clean Acres and Goldman Site, Dirt Dober's out of Mullins, all these meet requirements, Dirt Dober's is local, so they could be, if you had issues afterwards, it'd be easier to get them back in, so I'll leave it up to council, which one of those three you'd like to go with?
I would suggest Dirt Dober, it's closer.
I have seen their trucks around there too.
Oh, yeah, no, they do really, they do really good work, they really do, they're not gonna aggravate, they go get the job done and then they go.
I'll make the motion that we use Dirt Dober, do you have any suggestions?
I was gonna ask a question, those three met all the requirements?
Yes.
They met all the requirements of bid, so all of them submitted a?
Well, let me, let me refrain from saying that, we have not required them to get the worthless comp and liability at this point, once you, whichever one you go with, then we'll make sure that they've got those qualifications, if not, then we'd have to bring it back.
But they met all the qualifications?
Yeah.
Why would we not go with a little bit?
I'd just say get somebody more local, because being local would be easier to get, you know?
I, I understand trying to help, I believe you me, I'd, I'd love to help, but, yeah, taxpayer money.
I will say this, we went with a low bid over there at the City County Complex, and I don't think that does the best work, sometimes the lowest bid ain't the best work.
We didn't go with a little bit of City County Complex.
Well, I say, we got a motion on the floor, we get a second?
I'll second.
All right, all in favor? All right, number eighteen, approval of landfill truck bid.
I don't think you asked for any opposed.
Oh, any opposed, I'm sorry, on seventeen, all right, I'm sorry about that, number eighteen, approval of landfill truck bid, requires a motion?
This is one items that's in the GeoBond, this is the truck, tractor truck that goes down at the landfill, we put it out for bids, Kevin tried to get some bids on this, we only had one bid, and they are on the source well contract, so they, it meets the requirement of bidding it out, so I'd like to recommend that we go with TLG Peterbilt out of Florence for the new truck.
We have a recommendation from the administrator to go with Peterbilt out of Florence, requires a motion?
I'll make that motion.
We need a second?
Second.
All in favor? Number nineteen, approval of bid for county vehicles.
These were also in your budget with the GeoBond, I got, these are, all three of these companies are on state contract, this is not through Enterprise this year, we felt, I felt like we could get them cheaper by going through state contract, and what you have there is those three, and they, they are lower than what Enterprise was projecting that their price was gonna be, but I.
State contract?
State contract.
What do you mean by that?
The state bids out certain items that's on the state procurement side.
So we'll own these?
We will own them, and we can, we can purchase off that state contract.
We just get to take advantage of the price in order to negotiate.
Okay.
Right, right, so I'd like to recommend that we go with the, the Attar To Dodge, the Dodge Rams for the four by four quad cabs and four by two quad cabs, and you see those prices there.
Did I ask any?
Two of each.
Two of each?
Yes, sir.
Both of these off state contract?
Yeah, all off state contract.
And these are for who?
One for emergency management, one for, for Daniel, one's in Tony's department, and the other one is for litter control.
And these will be?
Four.
And these will be county vehicles?
That's correct.
This is our normal control, replacing cycles, rubbing?
Well, we don't have no replacement.
We don't have replacements, but we got something for the lease.
No, these won't be, these won't be replacing lease vehicles.
But if we had leased, if these were lease vehicles, we would have something to do with.
That's right.
So we have a motion to go with the proposed items that the administrator just proposed, can you get a motion on that?
I'll make that motion.
You need a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? All right, number twenty, approval of bids for the Bookmobile, requires a motion, are you got discussion?
Well, you've got two bids there on the Bookmobile, I've talked with the librarian, and her recommendation is going with Matthew Specialty Vehicles out of Greensboro, they are about five, well, about forty eight hundred dollars less than favor, but this is the company that most of your libraries in South Carolina are using for the vehicles.
You're fourteen dollars, yeah.
Excuse us, yeah, fourteen.
What's your basic recommendation on them, just curious, lower price?
Lower price and plus what they're providing for, the options they're providing for the vehicle.
I'll make a motion and set that up.
All right, second, all in favor? All right, number twenty one, finance software bid approved.
Mr. Vice Chair, this is a sole source contract with Harris Local Government, this is for our finance department software, this is software licenses and other equipment that goes with that, and I'd like to recommend that we approve Harris Communications, Local Government Communications.
We got a motion to approve Harris Communications for local government?
Could I ask, could I ask, did we receive bids from others?
This software matches, it works with the software system we already have. This software matches, it works with the software system we already have. So, so, so we're-
Sole-source provider?
Yeah.
We got a motion on the floor. Can we get a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Twenty-two, appointment of Dillon County Safety Committee.
Mr. Vice Chair, this, we have a safety committee that works with our risk management and HR. This committee is in, has not been in place in about ten years now. And this is to reestablish that committee. This helps us with our, our property and liability and workman's comp insurance. And basically, this, this is the group here. It's basically the same departments that are on here, but they're different apartment heads now that were ten years ago. And so, I'd like to recommend the names that you see there, and we would need one council member to serve on that safety committee. So, I'd like to recommend those, and then y'all can decide who would be the council member to serve.
This call requires a motion?
I'll volunteer to be councilman.
I'll second.
All in favor? All right, number twenty-three, appointment of opioid settlement committee.
Mr. Vice Chair, as y'all know, there was an opioid settlement that was taking, that's taking place. We need to form a opioid committee that will start meeting and develop, and then the plans of how that money's going to be used. And what I'm asking council tonight is that committee be made up of representatives from the following groups. Law enforcement, the school system, hospital, EMS, Trinity Behavioral Care, the Ministerial Alliance, DSS, mental health, and then citizens' representation. What we would do is if y'all agree with make up for this committee, then I will contact each one of these agencies and see who is willing, they're willing to send to be on that committee. Once we get that committee established, then the planning will start of how to use that money. We'll have to submit that to the state, and then we'll get that money back. There is a planning grant, but in order to get that planning grant, you've got to have this committee established also.
Okay, so, the opioid settlement requires a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second, we need a second?
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
And you also see attached to that for just for your information is a, is the, a document there that talks about creating a settlement council.
The citizen representation, is that, where, where, who, I mean?
That would come from council.
That would come from council?
Right. Yeah, and what we're looking for really is someone that has been impacted by the opioid epidemic.
Someone's lost family.
Lost family or been involved in something. That's correct.
Number twenty-four, committee appointment. Tell them we have it.
I don't know anybody.
Nobody, Stevie, nobody, uh, Karen?
Yeah, I got somebody for grievance committees. I'm going to take Larry German and change him to Cassie.
Cassie Vaughn?
Yeah, Cassie Vaughn.
Okay. Can we get a motion to remove Larry from the grievance, Larry German from the grievance committee, and add Ms. Cassie Vaughn?
I don't agree on removing because we don't work for the county no more.
Right, right, I understand. Can we get a motion? Can we get a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? All right, there's no need for executive session tonight, so we'll go to number twenty-six.
We'll go to that, just as a reminder. I've mentioned y'all, we will need to have a special meeting on December the tenth at nine o'clock in reference to an economic development project.
Number twenty-six, can we get a motion to adjourn?
Make that motion.
We get a second?
Second.
All in favor?